You're welcome to come. The families and I had a lot of fun. The teachers come. It's kind of a fun little night for us. We don't have boring bilingual meetings. We have fun. So we are having a contre de main.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public comments?
Um, I had a couple of things that I wanted to drive from his with Dr. White. She, we spoke this morning and she cleared up everything. But I did speak about emergency hotline for the kids when they go to after-school programs and stuff. Not even the after-school programs, just after school sometimes these kids drift off. I know one time I let him walk home and he was playing in the snow way too long, you know? And I got, I panicked, you know, because it was his first time walking on by himself. He was a third later, so you know, it was his first year. And so I just, you know, we talked about that and she did understand where I was coming from because we had a situation there. But everything was involved and I felt, I feel so much better going forward. Um, I did want to talk about some like lighter things that I noticed. I come on, I was coming, I'm working at Michelle Obama, but I was coming on Wednesday and some Thursday to read with the second grade, where they're reading with me. So I noticed that some kids are really like, especially with the big words, I'm like, really amazed. But some of them are really facing challenges. So I do reading groups with my kids at my home, but it's a lot to be in a home. And I asked some of the children, did they have library cards? A lot of these kids did not have library cards. So I was thinking if maybe we could get with the library. I know a person that works at the library and I know she would be willing to, you know, to help us out. And like, um, get these kids on Saturday, you know, maybe, you know, hand out flyers and talk about Saturday events. Like, I was thinking like an improvement hour, just to improve your skills. For some of the kids who may not feel like they are challenged with reading, but just want to improve their skills. I'm sorry, I had to speak over this kid and I'm losing my voice. And then sign language, I've been trying to learn sign language for years and it's like, it, it helped me to teach the kids and even my dogs, you know? And so I was thinking like, that would be something that kids would be interested in because, you know, they can use little, you know, gestures versus always talking to each other across the classroom, you know what I mean? If I'm trying to say I'm sorry for something or, you know, just give somebody a little whatever, you know, to let them know, well, we both can stay on task. We both can stay on track, you know? Because I know these kids don't really think about their future, but they care about their future. They want a future, they want a, you know? And I feel like this is a good community, but we as parents, we just got to step it up just a little bit more. And I know I slacked in some of myself too because I had a long-hour job for a period of time and it took me away from my kids and I noticed the difference in him. I noticed the change, you know? Even with this right here where he's sort of constantly, and I, we had this discussion before we walked in and he's still tic-tacking on the phone. So, you know, it's, it's a challenge as a parent. So I get it and I appreciate Dr. White understanding. And, um, I'll take that. I'm just trying to knock down a couple of things that I had on my heart and I'm, I'm here to help. So I would like to join a PTO gym on 21st Century. I would, I would like to join here. Yeah, I used to be the secretary, so I'm, I'm getting back there, y'all. Work with me. I just got a job.
Thank you. Public comments?
Hi, good evening. This is the Martin Teachers Federation Park Forest. Um, I talked with Dr. White on Friday and hopefully she forwarded this invitation for you all for our annual retirement dinner. Um, that's coming up on June 1st. We have four certified teachers that are retiring, administrator and another district office personnel member. So if you could RSVP for us, that would be great. We'd love to see you. And in other news, recently I also talked to Dr. White about this on Friday. I noticed a posting for a district registrar truancy officer position and it was posted as a non-union position. Uh, Dr. White and I talked about this on Friday and I left our meeting respectfully agreeing to disagree on the issue. In the past, the district registrar was a position held by a 12-month secretary and all secretaries are covered under our bargaining unit. Um, after speaking with someone who has held this position in the past, the workload is immense and returning registration to the district office, it will be even more work trying to reorganize all the files from all the buildings into one building from where it was. Um, currently our building secretaries are doing registration. When the original registrar position was dissolved a couple of years ago, the extra duties of registration were put on our current secretaries who are not compensated for the extra workload. So a bargaining unit position was dissolved, but the work was still being done by bargaining unit members. So why would it be even a consideration to create a new non-bargaining unit position for work historically done by our members? Um, Dr. White also believes that our truancy issues have become quite a problem and the district needs additional help. We have a wonderful truancy officer who's been with us for years and I was told that he would not be removed from the position, but rather work with the newly created position for hire. And if two people are needed to do this truancy officer work, that tells me that that position will also be more than enough for a full-time position. So in closing, I ask, um, for trying not to erode our contract by removing a position that's been done by our bargaining unit and trying to cram two very intense full-time positions into one might be quite challenging. Um, I believe that they're very distinct and separate positions. I understand that other districts may have had these two positions in one person's job description, but considering these will both be new roles in our district, each position will take time to acclimate our district and learn. What's best for other districts isn't always what's best for us. So I'm just asking that you please continue to keep these roles separate and covered under the appropriate contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments?
No other public comments, President Molsby. I would like to extend an invitation to our eighth-grade students who are in the audience to please stand. We're here this evening. We're here this evening to learn leadership points for graduation as part of their leadership development to learn more about board governance. So we're excited to see them and they will be graduating soon. Thank you for being here. Hopefully you have an opportunity to learn some things this evening and go back and share with your teachers and your classmates. I also would like to congratulate Ms. Starks on her science fair. We see our science boards that are posted here. Twenty-first century students participated in the science fair and some of them have their award ribbons on them. So if you have an opportunity as you exit this evening to take a look at the excellent work of our students at 21st Century. Ms. Starks, did you have any additional comments regarding the science fair?
Um, I do not, other than they did an excellent job as they always do. I'm very proud for them to stand there and talk about their projects. I think that you missed that part, but please believe what you can from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Starks.
Any other public comments?
It was on our, I'm going to work with third-grade students this year. They've been amazing and their work shows.
Thank you, Mrs. McRae.
I just want to congratulate Mrs. Chan for a God from School outstanding performance today. It's so good to see our young learners really learning and able to have, have fun. And they brought life and vibrant and, you know, and so just thank you, Mrs. Chan and entire conference.
Thank you.
I have one comment before we get going as well. Congratulations as well to the eighth graders, but I want to congratulate Ms. Perkins as well for winning her election for School District 163. She will be on the board.
Next agenda item, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education, staff, community members, families and students. This evening's superintendent's report begins with attendance. Item A, the attendance for the month of March 2023. Algonquin Pre-Kindergarten Center, 83.25%. 21st Century Primary Center, 90.65%. Black Hawk Primary Center, 91.83%. Mohawk Primary Center, 88.24%. Barack Obama School of Leadership and STEM, 91.04%. And the school with the highest attendance for the month of March 2023, Michelle Obama School of Technology and the Arts at 93.06%. Item B, superintendent's report, enrollment for the month of March 2023. Our district enrollment total is 1,577 students. Algonquin Pre-Kindergarten Center, 160 students. 21st Century Primary Center, 160 students. Black Hawk Primary Center, 161 students. Mohawk Primary Center, 272 students. Barack Obama School of Leadership and STEM, 329 students. Michelle Obama School of Technology and the Arts, 495 students. Again, for a total of 1,577 students for the month of March. Item C, superintendent's report, a recommendation to the Board of Education to enhance our teacher retention and teacher recruitment activities. Does someone have, uh, advance? Oh, thank you, Mr. Ricker. Oh, Mr. Trebbel, sorry, I didn't see you over there. No, that's fine, Mr. Trebbel can accommodate for me. This evening I want to share information with the Board of Education regarding teacher retention and recruitment. As we know, there are many reasons that staff members stay and leave school districts. Some of the reasons for leaving, leaving could be personal, um, which includes retirement, personal family considerations, a spouse or a family relocating, benefits including salary, learning climates, which could include a workload, school culture and climate, student discipline, behavior, leadership support, lack of support from administration or poor communication. Those are some reasons that we could know that staff leave school districts. We know that there is a teacher shortage in the state of Illinois across the United States as well, but specifically in Illinois. Eighty-eight percent of schools reported a shortage for this school year as shared by the Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents. Ninety-three percent of school districts expect problems to continue and maybe be worse for the 2023, 24 school year. Currently, as of March 2023, there are 2,000-plus openings that are unfilled in schools across the state of Illinois. Ninety-six percent of the districts also report a substitute teacher shortage. I share this information to share that we value our staff in School District 163. We are excited about opportunities to train and mentor staff and we want our staff to stay on our team. We know that there are many reasons that staff may leave. We know that there are some incentives that help staff to remain. We also know that monetary incentives are not the only incentives. We know that there are other priorities that help staff make decisions about whether they stay or leave in their current teaching position. We want to ensure that we continue to provide positive support in safe schools within a positive school climate for all of our educators and our school leaders and our students. We know that it's important to engage in solutions for teacher shortage through developing our Grow Your Own Pathways. During the month of May, we will have our first cohort of Grow Your Own graduates that have worked in the school district. Two of them are in the audience this evening. We'll be celebrating them as they graduate May 5th from Roosevelt University with their teaching certification. We are proud of them. We want to continue that work. That's only part of enhancing our staff, but we are excited about that part as well. And we want to enhance our recruitment activities. Dr. Patterson has visited many schools, shared information regarding candidates. Our school principals have begun interviewing and are filling positions for staff members that are retiring and a few of the resignations we have received. All of those efforts are important. We want to honor and recognize our staff members. We want to provide a monetary incentive, which is not the only incentive as I shared earlier, but our plan is to offer as a recommendation to the Board of Education, a $1,000 teacher retention stipend to all certified staff entering their second through fourth year that sign their teacher contract with us by May 26th to return next school year and a $1,000 teacher retention stipend to all tenured teachers returning next school year. We also believe that it is important to retain our classified staff because they are the systems of support that help our classroom teachers. Our recommendation this evening is a $500 stipend to our paraprofessionals that will be returning next school year in August. We know that it's important to attract new teachers and paraprofessionals as well. So our goal, as we recommend to the board this evening, is a $500 stipend for our new teachers that sign a contract with us for the next school year and a $250 stipend for new classified staff that join School District 163. Next slide. We will also be implementing a survey upon our staff members to determine some of those specific reasons why they're considering leaving the school district and what we can do to help school district employees stay and remain in their positions. We want to offer that survey in the next couple of weeks during the month of May as we're approaching May. And we also have committed to the recommendation to the board this evening that all of the teacher retention stipends and teacher recruitment stipends will be offered on the first direct deposit paycheck on the 2023, 2024 school year. We hope that this small incentive does allow teachers to know that we are valuing you as educators and as part of our team. The funds for this teacher retention stipend will come from our ESSER grant and amount to approximately $180,000 at this time when you just look at the staff that is currently employed in our classified and certified job categories. Are there any questions?
Yes, um, regarding the survey for teacher retention for the current teachers that are leaving, um, did you, I know you did follow up with the Dr. Brett Church room in Coriander University. And my question is, was, I know that you were looking at that and another program. Did you decide which one?
I'm still waiting for a little more detailed information from Dr. Patterson, who is a member of the Illinois Association of School Personnel Administrators to compare the survey. The survey with Dr. Church would be $8,000 is the quote that he provided for us. And they would come out and work with our staff, basically virtually, sorry, they would not come out, virtually implement a survey with our staff and analyze the results and give us some of their recommendations. They have worked with the state of Kansas in the United States. They have not worked with the state of Illinois. But Dr. Patterson was looking at a couple of other surveys that could be implemented through IASPA. So we have not made a final decision, but certainly by the end of the week, hope to have a recommendation to share with the board. You're welcome.
Hi, I saw Dr. Church at an NSBA conference and I did thank him for reaching out and he would be, and he also mentioned that he would offer 30% discount because we would be the personal one.
Yes, that $8,000 is the 30% discount. It was $1,200, so he did offer that discount, $8,000. So there were several administrative team members that sat in on the presentation with Dr. Church and then he provided his slides and that information as well, which I shared with you. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a comment. I just want to say awesome, I love it and, um, thank you for that, the incentives. That was great, great, great incentives to keep our staff, have more new staff coming in. And, um, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Okay, item D, superintendent's report, Federal Connectivity Program. Mr. Wiley, our IT director, provide an update regarding free tablet giveaways.
Dr. White, I'm Jim Molsby in the Board of Education. The tablet giveaway is, well, we partnered with Public Wireless to give away tablets through the Affordable Connectivity Program. Affordable Connectivity Program is an FCC benefit program that allows low-income families to receive internet devices, what to help pay for internet devices for their households. So starting in January, we submitted, or we circulated two different flyers. The initial flyer was a flyer that we provided by Public Wireless and we sent them to families via SMS or text messaging and email communication. We sent the flyers on the 17th of January. We did it every two weeks, 17th of January, the 31st, the 13th and the 27th. In total, we received 318 total responses. Of those total responses, there were about 75 to 80 responses that was, that were incomplete or duplicates. And so that cancelled out, well, that took the number down to roughly 243. Um, of those 243, there were about 66 devices, sorry. There were about 66 tablets that were delivered on the 17th. Those students were, or those families were approved immediately. So once they were approved, those devices were shipped out to us. Um, to date, we've received 100 and, I want to say 106 devices. Of those 106 devices, 18 of them were from different districts. So there were 18 that we had to ship back or that we have to ship back because they weren't for our students in this district. So, and one of the issues that we, that we faced because we didn't, um, the reason why we didn't get all of them at once is because there were devices, as I mentioned, there were devices that, applications that were incomplete. There were some duplicates and so in speaking with the, our partners, Public Wireless, they stated that with a lot of them, there were students or families that didn't want to, apparently didn't want to give certain information to them. So which they have to, they use their fulfillment team to try to contact the families to get the information that's needed in order for them to prove the application. So the other thing is there's, what they're doing now is they're shipping, as they get their devices approved, they're shipping, shipping tablets each month until they get through to the 243 devices or applications that we have. So, um, parents began receiving their devices on the 4th. April 4th was the first time we started distributing the devices, right? Um, and here we have roughly, um, 25 devices. These were devices of parents that we were able to contact and they confirmed that they were going to come and pick up the devices. So right here, as you see, Dr. White and Kennedy Watts, one of the IT specialists on the technology department, was waiting to receive the families as they come and pick up the devices. And here's the first family, or the first parent that came that, uh, Dr. White was able to greet and she picked up the first device that was issued from the batch that we collected. And this was the first student that actually was able to come and pick up the device. And here we have a couple of parents that came. We have another student and then two additional parents. So to, to this, to date, we have issued out, I want to say 50 devices to parents. And what we're having them to do, we're having them to come to, um, 21st Century to the tech, no, well, 21st Century or the, um, the district office and we're having them to sign off saying that they received the device. Initially, we was want to put them, send them out to the buildings, but we wanted to make sure that parents sign off saying that they received the devices. So, and again, public, Chicago Heights, um, School District 163 would like to thank our partners, Public Wireless, for the device giveaway to our families. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. I would also like to thank President Molsby who introduced me to the contact and Public Wireless to have access to these devices for our students.
Thank you.
Final item on the superintendent's report this evening, Freedom of Information Act. Mr. Ricker?
Let's begin again. This month, the school district received three FOIA or Freedom of Information Act requests. The first request was from Jim Russo with Alpha Building Maintenance. He requested a copy of the current custodial maintenance contract as well as invoices from January and February of 2023. The second request was from Vince Espy with Local Labs. He requested a copy of the district's permission statement. And the third request was from Jenny Jordan with Data Research Partners. She requested a copy of all district employee names, email addresses, titles and their work locations. And all three of these requests have been answered.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rickers?
I don't have any questions for Mr. Ricker, but I just wanted to say that I did not receive the teacher retention thing and the fact that we're the, uh, the digital thing. I get it online and I didn't receive, it's not online.
My apologies, it is not uploaded in Word docs?
No, it's not.
We have, we have difficulty with Word docs tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, I don't know if you look on your screen, did the system update? Did you need to change your password?
Um, I know this was before. I, I know that it, I know that it's looking weird now, but what I'm saying is before, when I looked on Word docs, before the update and all, I was, it's not there.
Okay. Um, my apologies. Again, we attached it in two places, both in the superintendent's report and in the action items. We'll make sure that you receive the action. You're welcome. That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. White. Any other questions, Dr. White? Next agenda item, board report. Several of us attended the NSBA conference in Orlando. Have any reports you need?
I'll, I'll say.
You go first.
I went to a few really good, um, sessions, but I went to one where they actually, we, we sat and we did, um, meditation. And, and it was very relaxing because I went to another session after that and everyone was like, oh, I'm so tired. I'm like, I'm not. Meditate, so I think that's, that we should definitely look into, even from a board, from a district, for, for the students, for everybody. I think that would be awesome.
You'll bring it to the board?
We need to bring it to the board.
Thank you, Mrs. McCray, for sharing that. We do have mindfulness and meditation activities with our staff on our teacher institute days. We offer it as well with our students, our eighth-grade Genius Leadership Workshops. We have staff come in and partner with them to offer those activities. We will certainly bring it to the next level. And Dr. Johnson, the next time we plan for those activities, we will bring it to our Board of Education.
I'm a certified yoga instructor and I do practice in meditation every morning. Sometimes.
Why you look straight at me? You know it was me.
I believe right you do because we talked in Orlando.
Ah, yes, I, I had a good time at NSBA and attended several sessions. Um, one that was really interesting to me was a relation, it was called the relationship between decision-making power and oppression. And they challenged us to look into our community and see who may feel marginalized. And what they meant by that was look beyond what you would normally think of as a marginalized group by race, gender, whatever. Uh, but to think about it in this way, who has been relegated to an unimportant or a powerless position within our, or to an unimportant or powerless position within our organization? And so, the question that led most of the discussion was whether we had power with stakeholders or power over stakeholders, because there was a difference. And so, I thought that this was something interesting and good, and to bring back to the board for us to think on about, you know, do we have power with our stakeholders or over them? Because ideally, we want to have power with them, because together, we work, we're all, should be working towards the same goal. And, and that's something that I hope that moving, with the new board, when we do our reorganization and our, what is that, retreat, that we can take a look at that and really see about, how do we share power with our stakeholders? Another one was, well, I, I was part of a focus group with the Council of School Attorneys, I believe it is, COSA. I was invited to work with that focus group so that we could look at the new legal content service that they have for national connection members, and that's people whose states are no longer part of NSBA, but the individual school districts have chosen to be part of NSBA. So, they wanted our input on how do we get our information? How do we get our, our legal information? What's going on in our state capital, in the national, in our, in Washington, DC? And to figure out what it is that we need and what we want, and how they could better serve their, their member district. So, I was a part of that, which was a lot of fun. I got to work with people from Kansas and Oregon in that one. Let's see, and then, day three, one of the interesting ones I went to was partnering with your local union. And it was conducted by the administration, as well as the teachers' union in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And one thing that they said was that they were able to do some of the things that they did, because they had a lot of support from the governor in their state, who was a huge supporter of early education, early childhood education and childcare. And the main takeaways from that session was to listen to the needs of the staff and then brainstorm how to address those needs. It also involved union surveys, and importance of them, because it allows us to know what the needs of the staff and teachers are, and how we can help meet those needs, so that we can work on teacher retention, as well as making sure that the union is included as a voice in, in some decisions, because it is a partnership, because without a good partnership with your union, you can't solve the problems on your own. And actually, they, there was one part that I put on here where they actually went over how they gave stipends to their, to their instructors, their teachers, and their staff. And it was approximately five hundred dollars for every employee, except for the superintendent, and it included everyone. And so, I, I just think this is a wonderful thing in the frame of what we're, we have on our agenda today for a thousand dollars to our current teachers, and five hundred to our paraprofessionals, as well as any income we have here. It looks like we're on the right track when it comes to showing, I guess, through bank accounts, that we do care about the needs of our, our staff, and we do appreciate what they bring to us.
Thank you, Dr. White. Anyone else?
Mr. White. Decision-making power and, what was the name of the workshop, the first one?
Oh.
Decision-making power?
I just had it.
It just sounded like a, a good.
Something for you to use?
Yes.
The relationship between decision-making, power, and oppression.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended, Dr. DuPape, a couple of sessions. I guess the one that really started after you was, I attended the Student Voice Superintendent's Board of Education for the Student Advisory Council, the Strategic Plan of Action. Basically, it's really a very large school district, pretty much a consolidated school district, got over forty-one schools in their, in their district. They cater to twelve alternative schools. And so, they basically was really involving students in the process of schools, taking advice from young people, having them sit on advisory council, and giving them feedback as they were going through. I want to read all the awards they won over the last few years. The day school district won seven awards in the Davenport area. And it was, this is something that always intrigued me, because at the last conference I went to, they told me that you need to talk to your students. And I still have a plan on talking to some eighth graders, and I got a date with some strawberry root, with one young dude. He hasn't forgotten. But I really think that we need to start listening to our students as well. It's great to hear from our staff, but they give great insights. But, you know, our, our number one commodity is our students. And so, we need to start listening to the things that their students. Taking all the rest of them, wait, you got enough time for that? Anyone else? At this point in time, recognition of service.
President Mosby, if you'll allow me to take a few moments to recognize our Board of Education members, who will not be serving on the board for the next term. We appreciate the work that they have done, the commitment to the Board of Education, the countless hours of volunteerism, and the support of our staff, students, and school community. I would like to recognize our Vice President, Mr. Randall White, and our Board Secretary, Ms. Judy Hawthorne. You can join me. Mr. Randall White, our Board Vice President, is moving on to bigger, better things that are different than serving the school community. He will be serving as a trustee at Village Park Forest, and will be sworn in on May first, so we congratulate him on that. And thank you.
Make your mama proud.
We present him this plaque that says, "To Randall White, your guidance and direction as a board member has strengthened the bond between the community and the school. Thank you for your service from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three." You have your very own little gavel now.
I want to order.
Thank you, Mr. White, for your service. And Ms. Judy Hawthorne, who has served the Board of Education for many years. She has been with us since two thousand and fifteen, has served and worked in this community, and has had the opportunity to give every one of her children their diploma as they graduated from School District One-Six-Three. Which is a blessing and honor to be able to do that as a leader of the school community. We appreciate your commitment to School District One-Six-Three, the service, and the volunteer hours that you have given us. And you will always be a part of our team. Thank you. Your very own mini gavel to take home with you. Ms. Dylan, did you get a picture? Can you get all three of us together? Would any more members like to join us in the photo?
Of course.
Sure.
First, I want to thank this community for allowing me to serve. They stated that I'm moving on to bigger and better things. I might be downgrading just a little bit. I think this is the biggest thing that you can do, is to support our youth and watch the future generations develop and to be the stars that they can be and will be. So, I want to thank the district for everything that they've done to help me and work with me to be great and do great things here in this community. But I want to speak something to each and every board member here as well, too, starting coming from this end. Ms. McCray, started off rocky a few years ago, but I've grown to respect and to honor and to appreciate even your silence. It's your silence that tells a lot. A lot of times, you just sit and you're quiet, and the integrity that, that brings to this board. Continue to be that and do that. You're very, very integral, one of the most integral board members that's here, probably the most. Continue to be great and do what you're doing here, and look forward to working with you on the other side. You're welcome. Ms. Jordan, learned so much from you. A lot of wisdom, a lot of direction, a lot of understanding. The good part, y'all, not the bad parts. She don't want to make credit for that. Of just your wisdom and the direction, and just pulling on you at times when, especially when I first started, just to kind of get my feet on the ground. I appreciate you for that, for your wisdom and your direction. Very wise, so the community is better to have you here on this board. So, I continue to look for great things from you as well, too. Dr. DuPape? Oh, yeah, I got something to say about you, too. No, I'm going around this way. I looked it to the end. It's been rocky. Has it been rocky, y'all? Love it. Somebody was comparing me to Eric Mays. I don't know if y'all know who that is, internet sensation. To Dr. DuPape, I want to say, I love, appreciate you for what you bring, your intelligence to this board, your due diligence, and just your researching nature to make sure that you're ensuring the best for this district and this community. Yes, it's been rocky, we've had our ups and downs, but I've come to appreciate the disagreements, because that inspires me to even be better as well, too. Continue to be who you are. Hopefully, this next board, though, can work together as a unit and put on a better presentation, and I think that you all will. So, continue to be great in everything that you do as well, too.
Thank you. And congratulations for your win.
Thank you, thank you.
I know that's what you wanted to do, we talked about this before.
Yeah, please talk to me.
So, I'm happy for you.
Thank you. Ms. Howard, I appreciate you. You, no, you, we go back a little bit further to days and doing things in the community. A lot of people didn't know before you got on this board. They just thought that you just came out of nowhere, and that wasn't true. You really served and worked in this community and helped and pushed for our young folks. And I'm grateful for you, and I know that you're going to continue to do great things here and look forward, you know, I see you all the time, and I'm going to continue to see you. But I appreciate your congratulations, your work, your ethics, and just your heart. And that's a lot that does, that goes unnoticed, you all, the heart that you have for these kids and for this community. It goes beyond the words that you can say. Your heart is seen and it's felt. Ms. Jordan, my, my best friend. Tired, y'all, I've been working at the church all day. Ms. Hawthorne, Hawthorne, Hawthorne. I cannot forget that name. The Hawthorne's name rings bells, and it, and it does it graciously here in this community. I appreciate your service, your work, your diligence, your challenging, and just being that best friend that we have come to grow to be. And I look forward for you in two years. I look forward to you in two years of coming back. But just your service overall, just what you've done, this is a thankless job at times, it's a job that puts you in the paper at times. It's the job that sees your wrongs and doesn't highlight your positives and the good and the things that you've brought. And so, I want to just tell you, thank you for your service. My hat's off to you, and look to some big and great things coming from you as well. To my superintendent, I'm sorry I'm taking a very long time. Hopefully, we get through this, two more left. My superintendent, I appreciate you. Your, your gracefulness, that you move, and the things that you just fight and wherewithal against. I don't know how you do it, I've told you this at times, I get a lot of attacks, but when you're really in front and you're really doing the work, it comes with the territory, but how you do it and continue to stay classy. I truly take my hats off. I will miss you the most, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. You love these kids, you love this district, and you do it with the grace and the class that I haven't seen in this district before. And if I could, I would go on and on about how much I appreciate what you do and what you're going to continue to do. Thank you so much for showing excellence. Like you preach, you have shown excellence in this district. And if we can, can we put our hands together for our superintendent, y'all? Yes. And my Board President, Mr. Mosby. Thank you so much, sir, for taking the lumps and the attacks and the hits for this board. Heavy is the head that wears the crown. I never would want to sit in your seat, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Under a microscope, again, for things that might be disagreeable, but never put on display for the excellence that you've brought to this district, just like the tablets, the Christmas stuff with the toys, the suits that most people don't even know, that he got a bunch of over two thousand and something suits that you opened up for young men to go in and get suits. You do stuff in the light, in the dark, on the side, up, down. You care about this community, that name Mosby is going to have a legacy in this community. And I'll be doggone if it not, I'm going to make sure that it does, that name Mosby is going to be a legacy for everything that you've done for these kids in our community. We thank you so much, and my hat's off to you, sir. I appreciate you. And again, thank you, community, for allowing me to serve, and I move on to other things.
I'm not here on public speaking. Like my wonderful sister is, I didn't get that gift. But I did get the gift to serve. And so, in doing that, I want to thank Walter Mosby here for bringing me out of my comfort zone and encouraging me to run for the school board. At the time, I was just a single. Anyway, I was just a single mother of five, who did hear from home. And he challenged me, and I took the challenge. And for eight years, I've served. And so, thank you for that. Thank you for Allison, for Chazki, to Keisha. I'm going to start naming names, and I didn't want to get emotional, but God does everything well. This was not a mistake. And what he has for me is for me. And so, I'm not saying I'm coming back in two years. It was never my goal to be the longest-running board member, you know? And just like Dr. White said, I just, when I, when I ran for the first time, I said, "I just want to be able to give all of my children their diplomas." And every one of them, I have five children, walked across that stage. And I think we're going to have to. And I ended my last board meeting being honored with the President Lifetime Achievement Award from Joe Biden because of my community service. So, nobody can take that away from me. And so, leaving at the height of this, I know that God closes no doors without opening a bigger and better one for me. And so, I thank all of the staff members and the community members that supported me, that voted for me, that let me put signs in your yard, that shared my posts. I love you. I'm not one of the board members that's going to be hanging around in y'all business. I love y'all, but my work here is done, and I thank God for my time. Mr. Ricker, you are the best at what you do. Dr. White, though the weapon has fallen, it shall prosper. You are the real deal, you have a heart, and I'm only a phone call away. And if this new board gives you some smoke, I'm right around the corner. I got you. I got you. And I just thank you all for your support, y'all, my favorites. Y'all know who y'all are. The Associate Superintendents, y'all are wonderful. The staff, you are wonderful. If you love me, I love you back. If you don't love me, I still love you back. And God is good, and, you know, I'm glad that I had these eight years to showcase my time and my service to this community that I love so much. And just thank you.
Well, I guess, since I got the mic. Of course, of course. You guys, if it wasn't for Mr. Randall White, I wouldn't be here. Final line is, he saw something in me, and he asked me, "What do you think about being a..."
What's up, Mom?
Second.
Can you move the property, second question?
Ooh, yeah. Um... There are a lot of items on this agenda. And, um, I don't know about you guys, but I would like some explanation on some of the items because I wasn't, I didn't have an opportunity to go through them. There were so many. There was a plethora of personnel, staff. You know, like now, I can't even open this up. And I don't think it's probably fair to the community as well as to myself to actually vote on these items. I didn't have an opportunity to, to go through them. And I want to do right by the community, and I want to make sure that I'm very well informed, and I don't feel as though I wasn't born. I don't know, um, this new system we got, if it was used cleanly for each and every one of us, because like right now, we can't even access documents. And how can we truly sit here and probably vote on things that we can't have access to? I mean, I'm speaking for me. I, I, I don't know about you all, but it was, I, I do have a life, and it was a lot.
I did the math. There are fifty contracts under the, fifty contracts under the consent agenda. In addition to the over thirty, uh, that are, that we have to approve for non-union contracts as well as administrative contracts. We got this information on a Friday night. I got a knock at my door so late. We were like, okay, who's knocking and why? I did not have time to go through over eighty contracts in addition to everything else. And I'm in agreement with, with Ms. Jordan that this was too much all at once. I, in my time on this board, I have never had these many contracts to go through, and I have to go through them basically in three days with having a life, working, all the other stuff. It goes on, and what people, you know, the audience realizes is, this is pretty much an elective volunteer position. We don't get eight set hours to do this work. It's, okay, we do it when we can. And this weekend was crazy for me. The past two weeks have been crazy for me. There is not enough time to go through all of these and make sure everything is the way it should be. And the last thing I want to do is approve contracts, and then something's wrong. And that puts the, the district at some sort of disadvantage or liability.
Yeah, it was, it was very overwhelming. And like I said, I don't think it's fair that the information that was distributed and the fact that it's such an urgency to pull this through without us actually getting valuable information. I just, I like to be informed when I'm making decisions, and I just felt like I was not informed.
I didn't have any problem. I went through it. Um, it took me a day. And I went through each, each line, so I'm good.
Yeah, it took me about two days as well, too. Um, and I'm not saying that the process, or even speaking to it being rushed, not saying that the process doesn't need tweaking or shouldn't change, but this is common practice, um, and this has been done. You probably haven't seen this before because you never was on the board when an outgoing board was coming. I'm not calling against you. I'm not saying it. Yeah, I'm saying you probably, you say you haven't, since you've been on the board, haven't seen contracts come in this manner like this. And I'm saying that, right, and the reason that you haven't, because we've never, me and you have never been on the board when a board was transitioning.
We transitions every two years.
That is correct. Touche. Well, I could be wrong.
As we were coming in, there, there were...
When we were coming in, it was an excessive amount of contracts that was on the, um, agenda when we came in. They did a lot of contracts and a lot of...
A lot like this, though. It was not like this. I took notes on that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But it did, it took me about, uh, two days to go through it, but I did get through it.
I'm, I'm concerned as to how many days did it take to put it together? You know, like the secretaries, how much manpower, how many hours? Um, I'm just, I don't know.
We do go to closed session, right?
Oh, yeah, we almost definitely. But just, just for the agenda itself, yeah, not just those, that's not, I mean, tapping into the closed session item, just basically the, you know, the consent agenda. Yeah, we haven't even tapped into that. And I, I'm speaking about the consent agenda.
You have a question, Secretary Roca?
Uh, oh, hold on, I'm not done. So, um, in, in, in all fairness, can we possibly table this? You know, so we all have a fair opportunity to...
Table it to closed session and then revisit after closed session?
I, I don't know about you all, but...
I asked a question. I'm saying table it to closed session and then revisit it after closed session. What are you trying to take?
I haven't even looked at it, is what I'm telling you.
No, I understand that.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Motion for... Madam Secretary Roca, would you like to hold it down?
Ms. Hawthorne? Yes. Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. White?
Stay.
Mr. Mosby?
Please, excuse me. Yes, motion carries. That's four, two, one. One, six. Next agenda item. Next agenda item, motion to approve teacher retention recommendation. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four staff retention stipend in amount of one thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three returning classified staff. Five hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four new certified staff. Five hundred dollars for returning classified staff, and two hundred and fifty dollars for, and new classified staff that discussed in the twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Retention Meeting. Recommended by Superintendent.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes. Motion carries. Next agenda item, motion to approve the rise safe school agreement. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the rise safe schools program application agreement with South Cook ISC Four for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year recommended by Superintendent.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question.
Once again, I can't access it. I think it's imperative that I do have that information, so I can make informed decisions as well as an informed vote. Nothing.
You might have to try to get it all back here.
No, just tell me, just tell me you've got a reset password. That's what I'm saying. This, 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 this is a problem. If you remember the password and your username, this would need to reset.
Any other questions? Can you move the property? Second, Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Um, yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, six zero. Next agenda item, motion to approve quote for parking lot repairs. I got to read first. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve, uh, site services for parking lot repairs at Barack Obama School at a total cost of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in the Financial Affairs Committee on March twenty-seven, twenty-three, and is recommended by the Superintendent.
Right?
Let move.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question.
I have a question.
Yes.
So what are these repairs? Is this like routine maintenance sort of thing, or is there...
Yes.
Yeah, we have a rotation scheduled. One or two schools will get serviced a year, so filling pavels, filling cracks, reseal coating, gas water, striking apartments of this year Barack Obama's parking lot.
Thank you. I wasn't at the, the meeting last one. Thank you.
Next agenda item, motion to approve...
No, we...
We didn't vote yet?
No, I just asked a question.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, six one. Next agenda item, motion to approve contract for milk service. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the milk contract renewal for crystal dairy with an increase of three cent per half pint of white milk and three and a half cent per half pint of chocolate milk for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year as discussed in Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, and is recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question.
Still can't get in.
I have a question. Um, we're going to get the, um, the strawberry. The strawberry.
We're going to have a test run.
Okay.
I know I have to drink more than one carton. But we're going to schedule a date for the test run of the strawberry to see how many people can try it.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, six zero. It's six one, I'm sorry.
Uh, next agenda item, motion to approve consulting agreement. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the consulting agreement for the following, as recommended by the Superintendent. Uh, to Karah Dill, to Karah Dill, Board of Education, recorded, Secretary.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question.
Still can't get in. Can't, I mean, how could I make an informed decision to the community? I'm sorry, community.
Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
No.
Ms. McC, Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, five two. Next agenda item, motion to approve consulting agreement. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the consulting agreement for following certified staff members for forty-five days during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year at a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per full six hours and ten minutes day of service rendered and recommended by the Superintendent. Jeanette Moore, speech pathologist, Janet, is that Janet Moore? Speech, speech pathologist, maybe I need a piece.
Speech pathologist, consulting.
First basis.
Can you move the second? Can you move the property? Second question.
Still can't get in.
Did we note it?
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
No.
Ms. Jordan? I, I want to look at, I, I need to look at stuff.
No.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes.
Motion carries, five two. Next agenda item, motion to approve contract renewal for, for garbage and recycling services. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve three-year contract renewal between Parkport County Schools, one sixty-three, and Republic Service for garbage and recycling service from July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, with a one-year price, uh, give one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars a brief stint per month, and an increase to either the consumer price index, one percent, whichever is lower, for years two and three, as discussed in Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight, is recommended by the Superintendent.
Can you move the property? Second question.
Can't get in.
Did we note it?
And I'll take back, the person is right here. So... Make it make sense.
Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Um, yeah, yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, five zero. Next agenda item, motion to approve the contract renewal for fire alarm monitoring and servicing. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the contract renewal between Parkport County Schools, one sixty-three, and Johnson Controls for the fire alarm monitoring and servicing with a basic coverage package of a total of seven, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars for July one, uh, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-eight, as discussed in Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, and is recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
No.
Ms. Jordan? Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Stay.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes. Motion carries, four, two, one. Next agenda item, motion to approve doctors' permission to sell district personal property. We hereby move the Board of Education to adopt the resolutions for the sale of district technology devices to Julie Hawthorne and to Randall White, in amount of one dollar per device, as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second. New question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, stay.
Ms. Jordan? Oh, my, yes, finally, a yes. Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, at six, at one, at seven. Next agenda item, motion to approve the ombudsman service agreement. We hereby move the Board of Education to approve the ombudsman service agreement for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year for one slot at a total of seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and zero cents, as recommended by the Superintendent. So, move it.
Second.
Can you move the property? Second question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan? Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries, six one. Next agenda item, under hold this, Miss, uh, Policy, Policy four colon eight zero, accounting and audit. We hereby move the Board of Education to adopt Policy four colon eight zero accounting and audits as discussed in Policy Committee meetings on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and is recommended by the Policy Committee.
Can you move the property? Second question.
Moving property sector, question?
She was, um, Stella was saying you didn't, you left out the number of the...
Gatorade.
Oh, okay. I think the policy was at the beginning.
I read, I read the hand. Policy four colon eight zero auditing and, I mean, accounting and audits. Question? Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan? Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Ms. Mosey?
Yes, motion carries five two. New business, other... Motion to go to closed session. We hereby move the Education, uh, go to closed session, discuss information regarding appointments, appoint, appoint, appointments, employment, or dismissal of employees for office, contracts, and proposed relegation, grievances, negotiations, sale of real estate, student disbaring concerns, superintending evaluations for boards slash superintending goals and concern. Don't move.
Second.
Moving property sector, second. Madam Secretary Roca.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.